Good evening, I'd like to call the Litchfield Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting to order at 7:02 on July 15th. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with attendance and roll call. George will start with you, just introduce yourself and your status as a member.
George La Bash, voting member, presence?
John DeGrove, full member.
Zach Schneider, alternate.
Laurie Gandia, full member.
Steve Perry, full member.
All right, so Zach, we're going to appoint you as a full member for this evening. And the next thing we're going to look at is regional impacts for all the cases that we have. Does anybody have any questions on regional impact? Does anybody have an opinion as to, I believe none of these cases are developments of regional impact? Is there any disagreement or further discussion? All right, and I'm going to make a motion that the board finds that all cases listed on the agenda tonight are not developments of regional impact.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we're going to jump right into the cases. First case on the agenda is case number 07172023-1. This is a rehearing. It's a variance from LZO, Article 310, to construct a building within the 50-foot building setback from a right-of-way in the residential district. This case has been continued numerous times. Owner and applicant are Leon and Maria Dutton. Location of the property is 9 Woodhawk Way, Litchfield, Math 8, Lot 124. And who will be presenting?
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Proman, attorney with Pruney and Proman of Nashua. With me at the table tonight is Leon Dutton, owner of 9 Woodhawk here in Litchfield. And we have a variance case to present to you. And I have a handout for the board. I'm happy to count out five.
Long time coming.
Thank you. Some of you, I can't count.
I got two.
Thank you. Some of you may be familiar with this application, others are not, so I'll just give an overview. We are located, can we have a plan? Can we get a plan up on that screen? No?
I think we can. Let's probably do it.
Okay.
Do you want any one of these?
Yeah, probably that one that the cursor's on, in the upper left. Yep.
That wouldn't be it.
Yeah. So we are located 9 Woodhawk Way. The Duttons have owned this property since the mid-1970s. And we are in the residential district. We are abutting Campbell High School property to the south of us, to the rear, Woodhawk Way residential properties all around us. We have Darra Pond, kind of kitty-corner across the street, just to set the location. What's unique about this particular site is that the Duttons abut a paper street. When the, forgive me, I'm thinking of the name of the subdivision. When the subdivision was originally laid out in the 1970s, a plan being signed by none other than Ed Albuquerque. You'll see in my packet, I have Hillsborough County Superior, Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds Plan Number 9989. It looks like this, it's an old plan, out in the 70s. The Duttons' lot is on the south side of Woodhawk. It is Lot Number 99 on that plan. And you can see right next to Lot 99, there's a paper street. There's a right-of-way that extends from Woodhawk. And originally, the thinking was more likely than not, the thinking was there would be a future residential subdivision on the Campbell family property. As we all know, there's no subdivision there. There's a high school with ball fields, the, what do they call that, with the batting cage, right? We're all familiar with that part of town. So that's the lay of the land. And so what the Duttons want to do is they want to install a shed for, a one-car shed, a very small garage for their automobile. And what we have with the site, it's difficult to see there, but where the shed is located is the only, or is proposed to be located, is the only place that the shed could go on the lot. Because the house, you know, takes up the, say, the right-hand side of the lot. As you move further back onto the lot, you have the pool and existing, and a pool shed back there. And so the only place that the Duttons could locate, that's, thank you, that's very helpful, is to have the shed right along the setback, but it's a setback to a paper street. And you can see I had a sketch, I had drafted out a sketch, just roughly looks like that. So when we have two front setbacks, we have, we're eating up the, we're really eating up the, a large chunk of the lot. We have the 50-foot front yard setback in the residential district. And because it's a street, even though it's a paper street, we have a 50-foot setback off of the paper street, as was determined by, I already forgot his name, Jeff Black...
Blackwell.
Blackwell. Too many cases in my head. And so where the shed is located, the Duttons really thought that it really would have little to no impact on the neighborhood because that's a paper street. And it has been a paper street since at least 1976, when the Plan Number 9989 was approved. Now, having said that, I am going to run through the variance criteria, but I also wanted to just testify as a witness, if I may, because at least three out of the four of you know that I was a longtime resident of the town. I sat on the planning board, I sat on the zoning board for many, many years. And I happened to be on the planning board when Campbell High School was approved and built out in the late 1990s. Campbell opened in 2000. And I was on the planning board when, we had a courtesy presentation of when Campbell High School, the site plan was being prepared and proposed. And I can tell you, and for those who may remember, at no time was there ever a plan to use this paper street right-of-way. Now, remember, the paper street right-of-way was really intended for future residential development on the Campbell property, you know, if it ever got developed into subdivisions. When Campbell was going through their permitting, not their permitting process, but when they were going through their approval process, at no time did they ever contemplate using this paper street, just never. And they have three points of access, two along Albuquerque and one on Talent. And some of you may remember that the access on Talent was actually a two-way entrance when the Campbell first opened, but then over time, they realized it would be better if it was, they put a temporary gate or a bus gate, and so it was really just a one-way access. So there's plenty of access for all the students and staff at Campbell. Furthermore, this paper street leads directly into the baseball field and the batting cages and where the, and I believe there are a small set of bleachers or stands back on the, on this portion of the Campbell High School site. There's a letter in there from, in your packet, from the school district. But I would ask you folks to honestly consider, do we really think Campbell High School's ever going to use this paper street? What is the chance that's really going to happen? And if there is an outside, if you think there is an outside chance, I suggested in my reconsideration request letter, and I put it into the packet tonight, that perhaps there are some conditions of approval that you folks would consider with respect to use of that paper street. If, in the unlikely chance it ever got developed for Campbell High School, then we could come back to you to re-permit the shed or remove the shed. Or alternatively, initially, there were, when this was first before you, when the Duttons were presenting this case, there were some concerns about safety. If the roadway was ever installed, the shed would be right up very close to the roadway. And so we suggest perhaps a guardrail or some type of barrier if there's truly a safety concern. But again, it is our belief, is our true understanding that that paper street is never going to get used. There's the hardship. He wants, the Duttons, Maria and Leon want to install just a small garage for a one-car, and they have no other place to put it, other than in the setback along a paper street. So we would ask you to consider, you know, the likelihood of that paper street ever getting, ever getting used or, and it's not even, frankly, it's not even used as a cut-through of kids. I mean, kids aren't, there was a point in that letter from the school district that kids cut through, making their way to school. And so Dutton will tell you that's not true. Kids don't cut through. You can see pictures of it, but there's no beaten-down trail in that section on the paper street. There's no use of that paper street, other than just overgrowth in trees. Mrs. Dutton has talked to his neighbor, 7 Woodhawk. Our understanding, there's no objection, and they are in the same boat. If they want to do something with their property, they likewise have a 50-foot setback off of the paper street, which I believe actually cuts right into, down the middle of their driveway. So what happens here is, you know, this was done back in the 70s, zoning changes over time, and so we have an odd situation where we're being kind of held back from using the property as a result of a paper street that's, you know, we don't see that's going to be used. So with that, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I was going to touch on the variance criteria.
Does the board have any questions, or would you like for Attorney Proman to go through the variance criteria first?
I have a question. You do say that that's the only place it could go.
Right.
Is it the shed that's directly off the driveway? That's a shed as well, right? It's not a permanent building? That, so you can see there's, along the driveway to the, slightly, we have that right there.
Yep.
And there's distance between the house and that shed?
What does that shed have in it?
What was the question?
What does that shed have in it?
Um...
Those regular yard stuff?
Yeah, it's regular, you know, lawnmower, that type of thing.
So that's the, that's the, that's existing, that's there today. And so you could replace that, I guess in theory, but, you know, we're proposing to add a new, small shed, right, right along the, in the setback.
And the, the right-of-way paper street setback is 50 feet? A normal lot line setback is 20 feet?
A side setback is 20 feet.
Right, and you're asking for four feet?
To reduce the setback down to four feet. That's correct.
From 24.50 to six feet.
Right.
You want it to be four feet off the lot line, right?
No. Hang on, one sec.
Six.
You're correct.
But that's close.
Oh, this one shows, oh, this one shows four, on one of the other.
One of them showed four, I apologize.
No, it's okay.
So you're looking for a 44 encroachment?
Yes.
So they want to encroach 44 feet into the 50-foot front setback?
Yeah, that makes sense.
But again, it's a front setback off a paper street that, in our belief, you may differ, you may not agree with that, my proposal, but we don't see that it's ever going to get used. The Duttons have never been approached by any property owner of the Campbell family or Campbell High School to use that paper street. You know, we think it's an unnecessary burden on the Dutton family.
Any other questions before we go through the variance criteria?
What's the size of the shed?
It is, what did you say, 20 by?
12 by 22.
12 by 22.
Right.
Oh, it's on the same sheet.
Any other questions?
No, six. So with that, Madam Chair, we don't see that we're affecting the public interest criteria of the variance under the statute. New Hampshire case law says that we must not conflict with the implicit purpose of the statute, and must not alter the public health, safety, or public rights of the neighborhood, or alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And we don't see that we're doing that. Many of the homes around us have sheds, large and small. The Dutton shed, the shed itself will not alter the character of the neighborhood, it will fit with the character of the neighborhood. With the extreme, what we believe to be an extreme unlikelihood of a road ever being built, it's not fair to hold the Duttons back to a simple shed. And we don't see that there'd be any public rights affected or threaten any safety issues or welfare of the town. New Hampshire case law similarly holds with the spirit of the ordinance that we must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, threaten public health, safety, or welfare. And again, the intent of the setback ordinance, just in general, is to prevent overcrowding, to prevent neighbors encroaching upon each other and kind of create some space. And we are doing that because while we are encroaching into the setback, we're encroaching into the paper street setback. And we don't see that we're going to be violating the spirit or intent of the ordinance because the neighbor at 7 Woodhawk is, you know, we'll probably see this in the wintertime when the leaves are down, but we won't see it in the summertime. It's a, you know, thick vegetation, we don't see there's going to be any overcrowding or encroachment onto any of the neighbors at 7 or any of the other neighbors. We believe we have substantial justice being presented because this will significantly benefit the Dutton family, at the same time being with little to no impact on the town. When we have the, when we weigh the balancing test of the substantial justice criteria, we see no impact to the town, while we have a benefit to the, benefit to the Duttons. Property values, I don't believe they're at issue. They weren't at issue when this case was originally presented. We don't see that the shed will impact any property values. And frankly, this is a classic hardship case. This is a classic double-frontage lot. Many, there are a number of, there are a couple of double-frontage lots in the, throughout the town, but when you're subjected to two 50-foot front yard setbacks, that's not fair to one neighbor, whereas the next neighbor over them doesn't have that same condition. Very common variance request based upon a double-frontage, and it's even more so when the double-frontage is based upon a paper street that frankly is, we don't see that it's going to be used. We are proposing a reasonable use, a residential use. A shed is a reasonable use in a residential district, very common. I'm sure we all have them, I have one in my yard. I'll think about it, I was probably in the side yard setback, but I won't, I won't tell anyone. And, you know, we think we have a reasonable use, we have a classic double-frontage variance request, and even more so with respect to the paper street. And again, I suggest that you can, that you review the conditions of approval, if you're willing to consider this implication. We believe that we, if by any remote chance the road does go through, is installed in there, I propose some conditions that we can, that we can protect both the town and the Duttons in the future. But again, we don't see that likelihood ever, you know, coming to light. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair, members.
Any questions for the applicant? Steve, any questions?
So, where the trees are on the right-hand side?
Yep.
Would it be placed in that area?
No. Further down the driveway.
Yep, so right about there.
Yeah.
It'd be behind the current shed?
No.
Right alongside of it.
Next to it.
It's close to the current shed. I was out there last month.
And you won't have to clear any of those trees?
No.
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 No, all the trees are on the town right-of-way. And the Duttons have cleared up to and they maintain. You can see there's a row of rocks or bushes on the right-hand side. Right, that's all theirs, and it would be tucked right along there.
So that's the edge of their property there?
Yep. Yep.
So essentially, the shed they have now is in the, is in the right-of-way?
I wouldn't disagree.
No, no.
It's inside the setback.
No, it's inside the setback, that's what he's saying.
Not the right-of-way. That's a very old picture, too.
I think that's what he meant, right?
Yeah.
In the right-of-way.
Setback, setback.
Yes, yes, yes.
So that's a non-conforming structure? That shed is non-conforming then?
Well, I don't know when it's installed. And, you know, you might have an issue with when that shed was installed and when the ordinance changed to a 50-foot setback over time. Remember, this goes back to the 70s. But it could be, it may well be. The deception, the deception, the picture is deceptive because we all think of the, you know, our yards will extend to our neighbor's yard, but we get the right-of-way right in the middle.
I mean, essentially, this is a, this is not even a shed, it's a garage.
It's a small garage.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'm going to open it up for public input.
Is there anybody in favor of the application that wishes to speak? Is there anybody in opposition to the application that wishes to speak? Is there anybody with any questions that wishes to speak? All right, there's none. What we do have is a letter from the, well, it's addressed to the school district, to Dr. Michael Jettie, that was sent to us by the school district for this case, and has, everybody had a chance to see this, review it?
Thank you.
Have you seen that, Steve?
Yes, I did.
Give you a second to look at that, and then I just want to get, if I can, this guy.
What do you think about that letter?
Wow, I should have read this before. It's a long one.
If we may, we'd like to speak to that letter.
In one second.
Yep.
So I'm going to read this into the record. It is, Dear Superintendent Jettie, Leon and Maria Dutton applied for variance in Section 310 of the Litchfield zoning ordinance to construct a four or six, to construct a shed four or six feet from a public right-of-way. The zoning ordinance, Section 310, requires a 50-foot setback from all public rights of ways in residential zones and a 20-foot side setback. The public right-of-way leads from Woodhawk Way to Campbell High School property. The public right-of-way is also shown on the plan for Darra Village subdivision recorded in Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds as Plan 9989, Sheet 5-E. A copy of the plan is attached. It is unclear what the size of the proposed structure will be because the Duttons' application includes a 24-by-27 sketch from Stole Forest Structures LLC and a 12-by-22 proposed shed on a map of the lot. The Duttons' lot is 1.12 acres, see Exhibit B assessing, assessor's card. According to the assessor's card, the Duttons have three wooden sheds on the property in a greenhouse poly, see Exhibit B. The proposed shed is actually a garage that Mr. Dutton will use to store a vehicle. A neighbor, Hugh Killoran, stated in an email to the ZBA that the variance is to construct a building to his house, to house his prized Corvette. The proposed shed location in the Duttons' application shows the shorter side of the 12-foot parallel to the lot line and the longer 22-foot side extending from the lot line into the property. If the proposed shed is repositioned so that the longer side parallels the side lot line, the shed could be moved further from the lot line. Photos submitted to the ZBA by the Duttons show only a shed and a poly-top structure with a Corvette inside. Presumably, the top structure is the structure to be replaced with the new shed, which is essentially a garage. In order to obtain a variance, the Duttons must demonstrate that they meet all five, all, meet all the following five criteria in RSA 67433, Roman Number 1A2. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest, the spirit of the ordinance will be observed, substantial justice is done, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished, and literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Unnecessary hardship means that owned to special conditions of the property that distinguishes it from others in the area, no fear and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property, and the proposed use is a reasonable one. If those factors for unnecessary hardship are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owned to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot reasonably be used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it, RSA 673, colon, 33, Roman Number 1B2. In their applications, the Duttons give similar reasons why each of the variance factors were met. The proposed shed would not impede access to the use of the easement and will enhance the appearance of the property. The Duttons' reasons do not meet the first, second, third, and fifth variance factors. In order to receive a variance, the Duttons must meet all five factors. The first two variance factors, the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance criteria are related, and I'm not going to read the citations. To be contrary to the public interest, the variance must unduly and in a market degree conflict with the ordinance such that it violates the ordinance' basic zoning objectives. In determining whether granting a variance violates an ordinance' basic zoning objectives, the ZBA reviews whether the variance would alter the essential character of the locality or threaten public health, safety, or welfare. The purpose of the variance is to allow for a waiver of the strict letter of the zoning ordinance without sacrifice to its spirit and purpose. The purpose of the setback requirement is to prevent overcrowding and safety issues. The town zoning ordinance lists purposes of the ordinance, which include securing safety from fires, panic, and other dangers, providing adequate light, air, preventing overcrowding of land, zoning ordinance, Section 100. The basic zoning objectives and setback requirements are violated by a 40-foot, 44-foot variance. The right-of-way on the plan is 50 feet, which is required by the town's public and private road designs requirement. The setback is not determined from the P, each portion of any road. The Duttons have not submitted any evidence that homes in the neighborhood have sheds or garages within four or six feet of the lot line. In fact, the minimum side and rear setback for sheds of 200 feet, 200 square feet or less is 10 feet, see zoning order, Section 310. The proposed variance would alter the essential character of the neighborhood, overcrow the lot, and impact safety. The third variance factor is substantial justice. Will be done by granting the variance. In determining whether substantial justice factors met, the guiding principle is that any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. The Campbell High School property, see Exhibit C, assessor's card, is 38 acres. The high school campus has access in Albuquerque Ave. The right-of-way abutting the Duttons' property is the second means of access, which is currently used by the students. Placing what essentially is a garage only four or six feet away from the right-of-way impacts the use of the right-of-way for the public and the school. If a road is developed on the right-of-way, the garage would be too close to the road for safe travel. Those interests outweigh the Duttons' interest to replace one shed garage with another to house their prized Corvette. The Duttons have not met the hardship requirement, they have not asserted any special condition of their property which distinguishes from others in the area. The uniqueness of the land and not the plight of the owner determines whether a hardship exists. The personal circumstances they own do not create a hardship. In the Duttons' October 6, 2023, letter on their rehearing request, they contend that special condition is that they are subject to two fronted setbacks. However, the plan for the Dutton subdivision indicates in the subdivisions alone that there are six 50-foot right-of-ways, and the lots on either side all have two fronted setbacks, see Exhibit A, Sheets 5 through 8, 6 through 8, and 8 through 8. There's nothing unique about the Duttons' parcel. Moreover, the property is 1.12 acres. The Duttons have other locations for the proposed shed that comply with the setbacks, including the other side of the driveway near the house or in the backyard. The Duttons can also reposition the proposed shed to make it more conforming with the setbacks. The Duttons do not need to construct a driveway to access the proposed garage in the backyard. The convenience to the Duttons of placing the proposed shed within four or six feet of the side lot lines is not an unnecessary hardship. For this reason, the ZBA should deny the Duttons' variance. If you have any questions, please let me know. Sincerely, Diane M. Garo from Soul Leslie Kitter, Sayward, and Loman, 220 Main Street, Salem, New Hampshire. Does the board have any questions about that letter? And Attorney Proman, you did receive that letter? You had a chance to review it? And Attorney Perlman, you did receive that letter, and you had a chance to review it, and I know you would like to comment, so please do.
A couple things. Something missing from that letter. But first of all, just getting to some of the comments in that letter. The attorney for the school or district is correct. The purpose of setback requirements is to prevent overcrowding and safety issues. The proposed shed that we have, the small garage for, for the car, um, is not going to overcrow or create safety issues. Um, the neighbor at Seven Woodhawk is not gonna be impacted. The likelihood of a road being installed, and even if a road is installed, uh, the road widths are, uh, twenty-four to twenty-eight feet wide, typically run down the center of a right-of-way. We're not gonna be having any safety issues, we're not overcrowding our neighbors. We don't believe that we are, um, changing the essential character of the neighborhood. There are sheds all over, um, Litchfield residential lots. Uh, we don't see we, that we're overcrowding our lot, or again, impacting safety. Um, the statement that the right-of-way that we're talking about provides a second means of access is simply not true. First of all, they, they have three points of access, uh, into Campbell High School. Um, and for those of you who have been in town for some time, you have not heard one peep about using this right-of-way to get to, um, Campbell High School. Uh, they say it's currently used by students, that's not true. Mr. Dutton will tell you that students do not cut through there. You can see that there's no trail or beaten-down pathway, um, to get there. Uh, again, that, that, that's not an accurate statement. And to say that we don't have a hardship where you have a double-frontage lot, again, it's a, it's a classic, um, variant, the classic, unique circumstances of a lot. Most lots in Litchfield do not have a double-frontage. Uh, this one happens to. Granted, there are some others in the area, but it's, it's a hardship to apply two fifty-foot front yard setbacks, um, upon any one single lot. But what's missing from that letter, um, is any statement of intent that the high school, the school district, the high school intends to use this right-of-way. Right, it's just, it's jumping out that, it, that, that it doesn't say that. Uh, they complained about the, um, about the variance, but they don't say we're gonna be using this, you know, next year, sometime soon. All right, so, um, you know, we have to be realistic, uh, you have to be fair to the Duttons. You know, do we really think that right-of-way is gonna be used in any, any of our lifetimes? Right? And if it is, again, we s, I have suggested conditions of approval that can protect both the Duttons and the town. So, that's my, uh, that's my comment, um, on that letter. Other than that, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, any further questions for the applicant before we close public input? Um, does somebody make a motion to close, do you have a question, John?
Yeah.
Uh, make a motion to close public input?
Sure, I'll make a motion to close public input.
Second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any thoughts, questions, comments before we get into the criteria? As you know, this is a rehearing request, um, from, what, a year and a half ago. You know, Johnny, I think you were, um, the original. What we're viewing this as a clean slate moving forward, um, so what we have presented, what we see here. Um, I do have concerns that I echoed in the past. Um, I can go through my concerns if somebody else wants to jump in.
Let's hear yours.
My concerns, uh, so my concerns, I do have, uh, concerns with, uh, the first variance criteria, um, the public interest, uh, the health, safety. I understand that right now it's a paper road, and I appreciate Attorney Perlman's comments that it may not be developed by the school, but it may. So, um, the school obviously is not in favor, um, of moving forward with this. So I think putting a shed four feet or a garage four feet from the lot line causes me concern for public safeties. If that road is developed and you have school buses going in there, you have kids driving in there, you have high school students driving in there, um, I do have concerns for that, and that's one. The spirit of the ordinance, um, again, is, the spirit is to help with overcrowding and safety. And that's why you have fifty feet from a proposed right-of-way. So I do have the, the safety concerns, um, substantial justice. Uh, I don't think that they've met substantial justice. I think there's more of a harm to the general public by not keeping those setbacks intact, given, uh, the school property is right there, than any loss to the public. Um, the hardship, I don't see a hardship at all in the, this board, and some of these members have been here when we've had corner lots before. And if we were to determine that corner lots are unique and meet the variance criteria, then every single corner lot in Litchfield would now not have to meet the fifth variance criteria. And if you look at the plan that was submitted by the applicant, you do see, uh, you know, several, you know, right-of-ways, uh, going through on the side, at least two that I can see here, and I don't see where there's any uniqueness, um, given what was presented. And the u, the unique factors that were presented was that it was a corner lot, and I don't think that's the uniqueness that's gonna justify us granting the variance.
I, I'll just add, I think there is room, um, outside of that buffer for them to put one, so that's, it's kind of a convenience to be putting this, um, in that one location. So I'm not sure if it's really a hardship, um, because there is room to put that shed or garage in another spot. That would, too much work.
And I do have concerns if that existing shed is already non-conforming. I mean, it may be grandfathered, we don't know when it was put in, so I'm not gonna comment on the actual status, but right now it's not meeting the zoning, and now we're compounding it to allow another structure to be within the setback.
I would agree.
Yeah, the property lot seems like there's additional space to put things in.
Did anybody wanna talk about anything else that was put in the, um, application packet?
No, I didn't have any.
Um, do you wanna go through the five criteria like I did? We'll go through it again?
Okay. Nope.
All right. So, uh, public interest. I stated my concern, um, about safety, um, especially given that this is a public right-of-way that will access, well, that does access the school property, and if it's ever, ever developed, um, I have a lot of concerns with, you know, high school students traveling, school buses traveling, um, people walking, or whatever may become of that. And I know there's conflicting testimony about whether or not that's actually used by students. And when I look at it, it does look like there's a pathway there, um, seeing where people could actually walk on that. And I can't comment if they do or if they don't, but we have comments from the school saying that they do, and we have comments from, um, the property owners saying they don't. Uh, but that obviously is still a concern for mine, that there's that possibility that they could. Any other thoughts for that?
I, I think that, um, regardless of whether they are using it or not using it, it exists, and I think we need to consider the safety factor so that, um, so there is public interest in, in keeping that right-of-way a right-of-way. So I would agree with your, your summary.
Um, any concerns about, uh, altering the character of the neighborhood? You know, that was mentioned in, uh, the letter from the school district, um, that that shed would alter the character of the neighborhood by having basically two sheds in that garage.
I honestly don't think it would alter the character of the neighborhood simply for the fact that it would have bought a wood line currently. Because if you don't know that there's a paper street there, it would fit in and just looking like you just put up another structure.
And there are plenty of detached garages and sheds on that street.
Correct.
All right, so that's one. Two, the spirit of the ordinance. I don't believe grant, by granting the variance, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. Um, again, it's, you know, the spirit of the ordinance is for safety and for setbacks. And again, I have this, the same concerns, uh, for one. And as the board knows, one and two kinda correlate with each other, so they basically piggyback off each other. So all of my concerns that I expressed with one, I would.
I know, which way is this going?
It's a budding of school.
Three, um, substantial justice. Uh, I do not believe that the applicant met that burden for substantial justice. Um, again, as I reiterated before, I think the harm to the public by not keeping that fifty-foot right-of-way, I mean, fifty-foot setback intact, um, is not outweighed by any loss to the applicant. I think it's important that we keep that intact. And again, he's asking to be only six feet from the right-of, so that's very close. So I think the, uh, loss to the public is outweighed by any gain to the applicant.
I would agree, if the intent is to keep the right-of-way, that would, uh, be solely true.
And it's, it would be even over the line if it was just a normal boundary line. It would be inside the twenty feet even if it was just a normal boundary line.
Yep.
Uh, property values, um, will there be any dim, diminution in property values?
I don't think there really is any.
That's, there's no effect.
Yeah, no effect.
And the fifth one is hardship. I think the first thing that the board needs to consider is whether there are any unique conditions of this property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. That's one thing, and then after that, we have to determine whether that, that uniqueness would be sufficient for us to not apply the specific, uh, variance app, uh, ordinance on that application. Um, I don't see any uniqueness from, on this property. Was, what was presented to us was that it is a corner lot, and I reiterate again what I said earlier. I don't think a corner lot in this case, um, is a unique factor that would justify us granting the variance, and there are other paper, um, right-of-ways in other corner lots throughout that whole subdivision. And if we say that this is unique, then the guy next door can do the same thing. The guy down the road will have uniqueness as well.
Yep. I agree.
And the last part is the proposed use is a reasonable one. Having a shed. Uh, I don't think having a shed is an unreasonable use, but I think having a shed, uh, encroaching that far into the setback is an unreasonable.
I would agree.
All right, so with that, um, I can make the motion, or does somebody else wanna make the motion? All right, I will make the motion. Um, I'm gonna make a motion in, let me just find it. I'd like to make a motion in case number zero-seven-one-seven-two-zero-two-three-dash-one to deny the applicant's request for a variance from LZO Article three-ten to construct a building within the fifty-foot building setback from a right-of-way in the residential, residential districts because the applicant failed to satisfy criteria one, two, three, and four for the reasons discussed.
One, two, and five.
Five, five, four.
Yeah, sorry, one, two, three, five. Thank you. As discussed, uh, somebody second that?
Second.
John? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Good, got it.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to another rehearing case. It is case number It's a variance from LZO Article eight-hundred, section eight-zero-one to, to permit parking in the Northern Commercial District where parking is not a permitted use. This has been continued several times as well. The name of the applicant is Ronisa Bouchard Hannan. Uh, the owner is Ronald R. Bouchard, Ronisa Bouchard Hannan. Location of the property is four-four-six Charles Bancroft Highway, map twenty, lot thirteen. And this is also a companion case with, do you want me, are you gonna present both of them together? Are you doing them separately?
Could I do them separate?
You're sure, yeah?
If that's okay?
Okay, yep, that's fine. So then we'll hold off on the companion case.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, and who will be presenting?
I am Sean Dunphy, an attorney from Cronin, Bisson, and Zalinski in Manchester. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as you said, this property is located at four-four-six Charles Bancroft Highway. Joining me tonight is Ms. Ronisa Bouchard Hannan, who is the owner of the property as trustee of the Ronald Bouchard Revocable Trust of twenty-twenty. This property is located in the Northern Commercial District. We are here tonight to request a variance from section, or excuse me, Article eight-O-one of the Litchfield zoning ordinance, um, specifically to allow for parking in the, um, the Northern Commercial District where that use is not allowed per the table of uses. Um, in the fall, Ms. Bouchard Hannan uses her property for, um, temporary parking for Spooky World events through Mel's Funway Park, which is a property right next door that is separated by a small driveway. Um, her family has used, uh, this property for parking for a number of years, um, over fifteen about. And in that time, and now she has created a system to ensure the safety of people parking on the, um, on her property. She has illuminated walkway signs, excuse me, illuminated walkways to Spooky World, um, flaggers, and staff with walkie-talkies. Um, and when she was here presenting this application, I believe back in September of last year, um, she discussed the plan is to keep people off of the Charles Bancroft Highway, and that is still the plan that she has in place today to ensure a safe access to the Spooky World property. If there are no questions based on that, I'll, can you jump right into the variance criteria?
Questions?
So the, the pathway, um, is along her property?
Um, the pathway to Spooky World. Uh, yes, we've been talking with the Spooky World people who are here tonight, um, and coordinating a safe passage through, and, um, that will be hashed out before the site plan, um, review and approval process before the planning board. Um, here, we're just requesting that the use be allowed. Um, and those details, we can get the, uh, the feedback from the planning board, who has the jurisdiction to deal with those kinda issues. Any other questions?
Didn't we already approve parking, temporary parking for this property, so why are we hearing it again?
We have, we, this is a rehearing request. So there was a rehearing request that, um, the variance request was granted.
Okay.
Um, with conditions. There was a request for a rehearing based on a, uh, insufficient notice that, uh, the legal, statutory requirements were not met. Um, that triggered the board's decision to grant the rehearing request.
Thank you.
Here we are.
Okay, and yes, I know you've heard most of the variance criteria for this before, so I try not to belabor it too much and go through it. Um, but, uh, number one, the variance is not contrary to the public interest. Um, this property is located in the Northern Commercial District. It is a residential property, but the use is in line with the, the zone. It is a commercial use in a commercial zone. Um, the Bouchard family has parked cars on this property for, um, about fifteen years, if not more. There has been little and, to no impact to health, safety, and welfare of the community. Um, and the property is close to the Spooky World property and on the same side of the Charles Bancroft Highway, so there's no need to have people crossing that busy road to access and leave this parking area. Um, the spirit of the ordinance prong is similar to the, um, public interest in that we need to look at the, the zone. And in this case, there is no alteration to the essential character of the neighborhood. It is a commercial zone. The property is near other parking areas, um, and the, uh, period where the parking is allowed or going to be used is for select weekends in the fall, um, which will limit its duration. It's only at night for select hours. Um, the substantial justice prong, substantial justice is measured by whether the loss to the applicant in the event that the variance is denied outweighs any gain to the general public here. Um, Ms. Bouchard Hannan's family has used this property for parking in this manner for an extended period of time. Um, they have the, the equipment. They have the equipment. They've invested in safety precautions to ensure that the people who park there are safe. They have the ability to do this and they have the space to do it safely. And the public would receive no benefit in denying this variance. The public would lose a parking area that's been in existence and is one that is on the same side of the road as the event, and it is convenient. The fourth prong is the surrounding property values. There is no evidence that there would be any diminution in surrounding property values. As I said, this has been occurring for a long period of time. And similar to her use, her direct neighbor, Mr. Medina, also parks cars. And there is a parking lot nearby on the Mel's Funway property. The hardship element, this property is unique in that it is a residential property within the commercial zone. The parking operation is limited and does not overtly conflict with the stated purposes of the zoning ordinance in that it is a commercial zone. And it is close to where the event will take place for the people parking. So it is a special condition of where the property is located. And the use is reasonable because the property is large enough for the parking. Now, I've said it a lot, but it is a commercial zone. And it is open enough to ensure the safety of those using the area. So in conclusion, Ms. Bouchard Hannan requests that the board grant this variance so that she may continue providing parking for limited weekends during the Spooky World event.
Thank you. Questions from the board? I have a couple. So is this the property right here that I'm looking at?
Yes.
So let me just scroll over. So it's a, she's living there and using it as a residential property?
Correct, yes.
And where would the parking go?
Um, in the front yard as well as the side yard and the very back.
So let me just scroll.
In the front, it's almost a horseshoe how we park cars.
Okay.
So there's plenty of space for people to back up in.
So this is your house, right? And so it's going to be right here?
Correct.
And now you sit around the back?
There's space in the front as well, in front of those structures.
Right here, yeah?
Yep, and through there. And then behind where that body of water is, behind the pond.
Oh, so it'll go all the way?
Yes, yep. They drive down the side driveway between Rose and I to the back. And we park them again in a hor, in a shape, line one side and the other.
And how?
We have never had any problems with accidents or anything like that in the years that we've been parking.
Thank you. And how large is the property?
Oh, then I don't know exactly. I believe it's just under three.
Yeah, actually, I have a two point seven acres?
Yes, thank you.
And how big is the pond?
That's a question for you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that I cannot answer at this time. And the pond is in a fenced-in area, so there's no access. There's no problems with anybody getting close to the water.
So you mentioned that you had a way for people to go from your property to Spooky World. Can you explain that?
Um, in the front yard.
I'm just going to bring this guy over here. Let's see if I can drop him again.
Yes, so the, right now, we're hashing out the final details. And the folks from Spooky World are here, so they can correct me if I say anything wrong.
Sure.
Our goal is to make sure that people are not on Charles Bancroft Highway when they're getting there. So we're still figuring out the details. And that's part of the planning board, site plan review that we're going to be doing too, is to get feedback from them. So, but yes, we're not planning on having anyone go on the actual highway. And that would be the goal, is not safe.
So in the front, are they going to be walking like right here where my cursor is?
Yes, the actual opening is kind of where that gazebo is. It's almost.
So, yeah, it's in there.
Where the white gazebo is, right behind that, there would be an opening.
So they would park, and they would walk across this way into Mel's?
Correct, and the people from the back walk to the front as well, all through the property, not on the street.
So further back, so I see this fence here? I thought there was a way for them to go around.
There's an opening right there in the fence, yep.
Oh, right here, they can go right here?
Yep, we opened right here, yes.
Okay, so they would come in and then go around this fence right here and go around to the back?
No, that's all, it's a little interesting, but no, they drive down the back driveway.
Okay.
Park their car and follow the way they drove in out to the front.
So they wouldn't go from the back through like where the pond is? They're not going that way?
Not at all, correct.
They're coming back around to the front by the gazebo that way?
Yes, everyone travels in that same direction to go to Spooky World.
And how many cars are you requesting to park?
About a hundred and fifty.
So, so there's no path to the event on the backside of the property? They all have to go to the front?
Yes, Spooky World has fenced in the whole back.
Your, your existing plan shows a path in the back as well as?
Because that is what the original plan was going to be. And Spooky World denied access there.
Are you using the same location to exit the parking as you are for people entering the parking?
Yes.
So this is still your property here?
Right to the very end of the last column.
So then we have this road here. What is this?
Strawberry Lane.
And that's a public right-of-way for the town? That's not a private road?
Um, it's a private road.
It is a private road.
It's owned by Spooky World, yes, by Katie Teats.
And so when they cross over Strawberry Lane, they're just going to come on to this grassy area, is that the plan?
No, they go right onto Strawberry Lane.
Onto Strawberry Lane, and where does that take them?
Um, they would walk back down towards the ticket booth. It takes, they have a pathway.
So back here?
Spooky World has a path, yes.
So way that where I can't see. So there's a path going down Strawberry Lane that has a ticket booth?
Strawberry Lane is a paved driveway. People walk down that. And then they would go straight across and Spooky World has a gravel or I'm not really sure exactly what it is, but they have walkways and paths to their ticket booth.
Back over in this area where my cursor is, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Behind the building, yes, behind the spook.
Okay. Thank you.
They walk that way.
Any other questions?
Can you direct traffic in, but are you there through when everybody leaves as well?
Yes. I reside on the property, so, yes.
So my only question is about the access to Spooky World and if it's, you know, we need to hear from them, I think, to.
I think they are here, so we'll, we'll see what happens. If they're not here, then.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Did you want to respond to anything that we said before I open it up for public input?
Uh, no, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to open it up for public input. Is there anybody here in favor of the application that wishes to speak? Is there anybody here in opposition to the application that wished to speak? Please come forward and state your name. Um, Morgan, if you want to sit right there? That's, that's fine. The board has objection.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the zoning board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney at Gottesman and Hollis at thirty-nine East Pearl Street in Nashua. Excuse me, I'm here this evening representing Richard Charbonneau as the trustee of his revocable trust. Mr. Charbonneau is a property owner, not a direct butter, but he owns property across the street from the location and diagonally away. It is directly across from the Mel's property, but not directly across from the subject property here this evening. I just want to remind the board, they ask this evening, the variance request is to allow parking on a private property. It is not a permitted use. Everything is zoned Northern Commercial, but parking is not a permitted use in Northern Commercial or in any other portion of the town. Parking accessory to a principal use is allowed, but the principal use on this property is residential. So they are asking to expand the non-conforming use. Non-conforming being residential, a use that's existed for a long time. And they're asking to expand it to a non-conforming use, a use, as I say, not even on the permitted uses list. And there's a good reason why it's not on the permitted uses list. The town doesn't want lots being used for parking lots which don't have anything to do with the principal use of that property. This has been an issue, ongoing issue about Mel's. And Mel's has worked very hard to align their property and acquire property so that they have adequate parking on the site. And this is going to be contrary to all the hard work that's been done to this date by my client and working with Mel's to get Mel's in compliance. As some of you may know, my client fought long and hard at this board, the zoning board, and the planning board to try to limit Mel's and in turn pointed out that there are other unlawful uses of the property, including this long-time use of parking by the applicant. The applicant, in fact, is trying to leverage the long-time illegal use of their property for parking into a hardship argument. That is, because we've been doing it, if you don't let us do it, it's going to be a hardship on us. And that is not a lawful hardship argument. It's, you have to treat this as if this is a residential use, which is non-conforming and has been there for a long time. And in fact, now they want to make it more non-conforming by a use that's not permitted. You can't treat it as if they've been doing this for a long time. I recognize they have, but this board has to look at it as, as if this use does not exist and never existed. You may also recall that my client owned the property across from Mel's that had been a parking lot and came in and argued that there was no other reasonable use. And they wanted to try to change it to residential, which is more in character with what's out there. There are six, seven other house lots that are residential right in the immediate neighborhood. And the zoning board denied it, determined that there were other uses within Northern Commercial that could be permitted and could be used. So now we have three lots with proposed use for contractors' units with an accessory dwelling. As soon as we attempt, my client attempts to comply with the ordinance and put residential use, which is accessory to a contractor's unit, now we come in with applicants that have perfectly good use as residential, long-time non-conforming use, and they want to increase the non-conformity, put another non-permitted use. Granted, it's only a limited time, but the important aspect here is once this first lot goes, the second lot is now the second case to come before you. Then there'll be the third lot. Then there could be the fourth lot. Every time there is an expansion of a non-conforming use, it makes it easier to argue, hey, I'm a unique piece of property because I'm affected by the parking next door. At some point, does the board just simply say, everybody can have ten nights of parking? And that's where we're headed. And that's what we're opposed to. This use will adversely impact my client's property during the time of use for the parking. There'll be more driveways, more parking lots, no sidewalk. And my client and the successor title owners of the contractor shops will be arriving back at their shop at peak traffic time where two more parking lots are going to be added if they were granted variances. I'm going to go through the criteria and I want to pass out, I just think it's easier if I just pass out some plans first so that everybody sees the last site plan of Mel's. So this is just the last site plan of Mel's, and it gives a good orientation. And if you look at the site plan, you'll be able to see some markings that have been placed on this site plan. The Bouchard's lot, it's highlighted, it's lot thirteen, it's highlighted in yellow. And immediately adjacent to it will be the next case that you will hear, which is lot twelve, and that's also highlighted in yellow. The existing driveways in that area are highlighted in red. And my client's lot is highlighted in green, so you can see the, the general location. You can also see it's in an area where Charles Bancroft has a fairly straight shot, so there's good visibility for the main driveways of Mel's. And in fact, good visibility for the driveways accessing my client's property, although they're limited in that area to only two driveways. When you make the corner headed southerly on Charles Bancroft Highway leaving Mel's, you'll see there's less of a good sight visibility and in particular, a worse sight visibility for lot twelve. But the reason for the highlights is to show all the activity that occurs. You've got Mel's with three driveways on the west side. And on the east side, you're going to have four driveways, two of which are Mel's, that's map twenty, lot fourteen, and lot sixteen, two of which are my client's. And so in that very area, you have lots of driveway activity at the time that they want this parking to occur in the evening. I would also point out, as I mentioned, there are three other residential lots there. You can see them on the plan, immediately adjacent in the same area. And the concern I raised is, once a variance is granted on one, I know each variance is unique, but if the argument is, I'm next to a parking field, pretty soon it's just going to tumble on down. There's no reason that everybody shouldn't be allowed to park in their yard during that time. I also want to pass out for the board in support of our opposition. This is a letter which was written to Mel's Funway by Benjamin Sargent, the chief of police. It's dated January seventh. And the second paragraph, while he says he's had no issues with Mel's, he goes on to say, "The police department did observe traffic obstruction as a result of the off-site parking of vehicles at four forty-six Charles Bancroft Highway. Members of the department have repeatedly advised the parking attendants at this location to direct cars drive to the back of their parking lot in order to collect money for parking. It has been noted that their failure to comply with our direction results in sloughage and at times stoppage of traffic on the Charles Bancroft Highway." So getting to the five points that have been argued and presented by the applicant. Number one, will allowing parking alter the character of the neighborhood? As I mentioned, my client fought long and hard to prevent parking everywhere where they were parking off-site with no variances and pushed Mel's to do site plans, make sidewalks, add lighting, and improve safety. This proposal, without any restrictions, puts parking anywhere on the lot. You heard the applicant testify to the applicant's attorney. And the applicant testified to a hundred and fifty cars would be parked on this fairly busy site with number of structures that you could see by the plans and also by what you saw from Google Earth. This proposal will add another driveway of traffic in a congested area without proper safety and without sidewalks on a busy highway. And I know many of these issues might come forward at the site plan application process, which is required and which has never been done before. And we don't know what the planning board will do. But as a use activity, this use activity engenders a hundred and fifty cars on that spot. This, this proposed use, while limited in number of days, and I'm not sure we have an exact number presented or whether that'll be a condition of this board if you see fit to grant it, but the character will be changing on those days in which parking is allowed from current residential with the, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven residences, not to mention the one in the back that's also rented out. So there are eight residences right in that immediate area. And it will change to have a hundred and fifty cars coming and going, being parked late at night. And as I say, notwithstanding that it's been done for years, it's been done unlawfully. And you have to look at this as if this is a brand-new application. I'd like to go forward and put parking on my property. The character will change. If this goes, as I say, the rest of the lots, there's no reason they can't go. It threatens both public and private safety. There are more driveways without proper safety controls. And we do not believe it is legal under the driveway permit that's been granted onto a state highway for an expansion of a non-conforming use, but that's not necessarily for this board to take into effect. It would just be probably a required permit they would have to get. It would just be probably a required permit they would have to get. The threat to private, the threat to private health, safety and welfare is more cars in the area, more cars late at night, headlights, gas, people, everything, that is a change in character. There are no specific lights presented in this application this evening. And while there's been testimony that there are lighted walkways and driveways, we don't see them and don't know what they are. The proposal is access to Mel's is across an existing easement for access to a single-family home. And people will theoretically go along that way. But there's really nothing to stop them and no enforcement for, to stop them from going the easy way, which is come down the driveway you drove up, walk to the front of the road and walk along Charles Bancroft Highway, which is what they do today and which is what creates a problem. Number two, will granted variance be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance? I've covered altering the character, increasing the non-conforming, threaten public safety and private safety. Section 1600 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Litchfield states that any non-conforming use may not be changed to another non-conforming use. So if you grant this, you are expanding a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. That is contrary to the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. Number three, will substantial justice be done by granting? As you've stated in your first case, there has to be a balance. But the first issue is, will there be harm to the public? I think I made the case that there will be substantial harm to the public if you begin to allow parking not only on this lot, but any other lot. But in particular on this lot, because their driveway is immediately adjacent to the major walkway that comes from Mel's parking to the rear. If you look at the site plan, Mel's parking is on map 20, Lot 17. It comes down a walkway in that area and that is where pedestrians are. They walk down and they cross onto Mel's. Mel's has done a yeoman's effort to get all of these people so that they're not walking on Charles Bancroft Highway. And there's nothing to assure that all of these people coming from Lot 13 and Lot 12 will in some fashion cross, not to the rear of the property, as was asked by the zoning board, but along the front. And if it gets so you can't see it or there are cars parking in that front yard area, there are going to be people walking on Charles Bancroft Highway. And that's going to be the harm to the public. And the, and the outweighing, the gain to the individual, they have perfect use of their property. Other than these 10 nights of the year, they want to increase the intensity of that use. And they want to do so at the risk to the public. Number four, granting of variance will not adversely affect abutting property values. As I say, there are other lots in the area that have residential use. And, and my client, while not directly abutting, is nearby and will be a residential use with contractor's principal use. And their activity will be adversely impacted as traffic comes and stops and tries to find parking in that area. People go to Mel's, they know Mel's, they know parking. Mel's, as I said, has gone a long way to put flags, lighted directions, police officers at the major entry. And now you have someone who wants to put 150 cars in there with none of that. This isn't going to work. So, and, and it didn't work in the past, as evidenced by that letter, which the chief of police cited. So there's a lot of adverse impact on property values. Finally, are there special conditions to this property? Look at the five lots on the same side of the street, which are exactly the same. This one's a little bit larger, but basically they're about the same. They all have residential use, they all exist in that area. But now we're going to increase the intensity if you grant the variance. It only, may only pack them on five weekends, but that would have to be a condition of approval here. We don't know how many nights a year it's limited to. And that, if you grant this use and you don't put a condition on it, could expand. I don't think there's anything unique about their property. They have a reasonable use of their property. But if you found there was something unique because of the butt smells and it is a residential non-conforming use, then you have to look to the second question. Is there fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and its enforcement? As I said, the purpose of this ordinance, that is the prohibition of parking in any zone in the town of Litchfield, is the town does not want parking lots. And they particularly don't want them in a residential area, which is what this is. Granted, it's all non-conforming, but they don't want parking lots as a separate or accessory use to a, to a non-commercial use. Finally, the final criteria is the proposed use reasonable. And we would argue that it does not, as presented this evening, does not make it a reasonable use of one's property in this area. Thank you.
Attorney Hollis, I don't know if you know this answer, but I think you mentioned it. Do you have any knowledge about Strawberry Lane, what that is? Okay, Andy, you're going to be testifying, speaking on this application?
No, I will say something, but it's absolutely not.
It's a, it's an access easement. It's a private driveway. If you look at the plan, it leads up to the house in the back there. Behind Mel's, there's a house. Actually have an enlargement.
Oh, then map 20, Lot 7 is a house? Used for, for those folks?
That's rental house. It's owned by Mel's, but it is rented out.
So they're the ones who are using that Strawberry Lane as?
As their driveway access. That's correct. And then it's a walkway access for the parking as well, to the back. The parking from Mel's primarily occurs all the way to the rear of the property onto map 20, Lot 17, which is the large parcel in the back. And you can see the entry comes farther down Charles Bancroft driveway. But that is a access walkway that comes down there. They have an easement across that property.
And again, if you don't know, I'm just trying to understand that Strawberry Lane access, that's an access easement. That's not a?
That's correct.
A right-of-way or anything else like that? So that's just something that Mel's has given to those folks at map 20, Lot 7, for them to get to and from their property. From, to and from Charles Bancroft Highway, from their property.
Yeah, it's historically been used as the driveway to that property before Mel's acquired it. And they've always used that as their driveway area.
As an access easement? Not as a private right-of-way or?
That's correct. Access easement.
So Mel's owns that Lot 17?
Yes, I actually have a blow, enlargement of that, which probably makes it a little easier.
Which goes all the way around?
Just pass these down. I have to tear them off, sorry.
So I do have one question. You mentioned 1600 where one non-conforming use was going to be changed to another non-conforming use. What was the first non-conforming use?
Residential.
In the commercial? There's no commercial in that, in that, in that building there?
On that property?
Tractors and there's?
There's a lot of activity, but I don't believe there's? Oh, everybody's happy.
So that's purely residential?
I, I can't speak, the applicant would have to speak to that, but it's my understanding.
Is that purely residential? At, at this time?
There had been an original site plan for that site, but I don't, I can't speak that that use is any longer used. And that, that use that's set forth on the site plan is any longer being used. I leave that to the applicant.
Thank you, please.
I do have a quick question. Strawberry Lane, should there be like a red dot there also to show that's an access route to, from 3A?
Well, Strawberry Lane is, is a driveway access.
But that's what these other?
Yes.
Dots are too.
Yes.
So it seems like there would be a red dot there.
Well, there is.
No, that's, that's actually the entry.
No, that's the Mel's entry.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, you're right. There should be a?
I just was curious.
There should be a drive, a red dot there, my apologies.
No, no worries.
One more. So you have three right there.
So the only thing I'd like to add is Rick Charbonneau, 401 Charles Bancroft Highway. In this whole thing, there is some commercial, I believe, I don't, I don't know, on that property. But it's not compliant, they don't comply with this site plan. There, there's box trailers, there's things out, out in that yard that aren't in total compliance with the site plan that they were giving approved. There's a lot of things that aren't right on that plan. If you ever pulled up the site plan that they have, you'd be horrified by what's on the site compared to what's approved.
Mr. Charbonneau, are you there? What are you doing with this property, map 20, Lot 18? What uses are going in that? Trying to see what the character of the neighborhood is.
It's going to jolt electric storm in there. They're going to build a building there. And it's going to be a fence company coming in, one of the other lots, the third lot we haven't sold yet or haven't negotiated yet.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Those properties, the house will be in the front and the commercial will be in the back?
Yes.
That's the way they were designed, right?
Yes.
On all three?
No, one of them, Jolt is going to have a house in the front, property in the back. You don't have to have a house and a building. The fence company is just going to be just the fence company with a building.
Okay.
Any other questions for Attorney Hollis?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Madam Chair members of the board, Andy Prohlman, attorney with Pruney and Prohlman of Nashville, here on behalf of the KBT Realty Trust, the Whitney Realty Trust and Mel's Funway Park, all collectively run. The Nightmare in New England presents Spooky World every year for 20 to 24 nights in the fall. I, I will say this to both the present applicant and the next case that you have. We believe that their variance applications have to stand on their own. But we have, we being Mel's Funway Park, Spooky World, we have a tentative agreement with our neighbors. So we're not opposing the applications. And we can answer any questions you have about the Mel's layout or anything on site, but we're not, at this time, we're not in opposition.
Sure, thank you. I do have a couple of questions. It's been represented by the applicant that they are going to go from the back of their property and cross over that Strawberry?
If you look on the site plan, you will?
Are you looking at this one so we know? Andy, which one are you looking at?
He's looking at the second one that we got. Do you want this one?
Yeah, no. Yeah, no, I'll, I'll, I'll call it out. On the site plan, that's labeled Sheet 4 of 19. It's not the overview, but it's a more isolated closer, close-up to Mel's.
Sheet 4?
In the bottom, bottom right-hand corner, it says Sheet 4 of 19.
So you see that this is the one that he's looking at?
In the middle of the plan, you will see a long rectangular building that says Ticket Booth. To the?
We haven't found the ticket booth yet. Okay, thank you.
Ticket Booth. To the left of the ticket booth, booth, it says rebuild existing stone dust walkway. All right, see the dash lines for the walkway? That walkway continues past that driveway and it continues all the way down to Strawberry Lane, about where it says existing access easement, the word existing. The current plan is to fence the Bouchard property, but leave an approximately 10-foot wide opening on the Bouchard side of the property where the walkway to the ticket booth will be and fence the rest of it. Hopefully preventing people from using the Charles Bancroft Highway. That's our, that's the current plan that we have, that we are discussing.
So where it says rebuild existing stone dust walkway that goes down towards their property, then towards Charles Bancroft Highway? And how, where does it go from there? Like, how is it going to connect to them? So if I'm at their property, I leave the back of the property and where do I go?
I, I only have one copy of this because I wasn't going to get into this. But currently, our tentative agreement has a, you can see the, right? Yeah, there's another one you can pass around, right? Mel's is going to install a fence toward the back of the Bouchard property. The Bouchard and Medina are going to be installing a fence along their property line toward the front and along Charles Bancroft. And there's, you can see the gap I have here, it says access. That aligns with the walkway. That's shown on our plan, but it's not shown on their plan. You can see, it's better if you do that way. And I hadn't planned to get into this level of detail because we haven't signed this agreement, but this is, this is what we're talking about.
Attorney Prohlman, didn't Mel's come before this board not that long ago and request parking for across the street for overflow, overflow parking?
Yes.
So you have your parking on site and then you were granted relief to have overflow parking across the street for a significant amount of parking there? Is that somewhere between 75 and 100 cars at least?
You are correct.
Okay, so now?
Correct. I, I don't, I, I, at the moment, I also forget if, if that's still being used across the street?
The question is, yes, if we need it, but we have not needed it last year. But it's there, if we need it.
It's there, it's overflow parking.
Thank you. So now you have parking on Mel's, you have overflow parking. Why does Mel feel a need that they need additional parking on people's residences?
We're not proposing this.
Okay, well, I didn't know if there was park, does Mel's have any parking concerns with the parking that they now have allocated for their use?
No.
Well, you just went down the road. I was?
Yeah.
Because I was going to say, does, does Mel's feel they have sufficient parking for this event?
Yes.
On their own site?
Yes, the back lot behind Boucher Medina property, the Charlie McQueston Farms and then the plow, they mow down, that provides all the parking we need. On a really good weather night, on a Saturday night where it's just, all the conditions are perfect, we may have to go across the street for overflow, but typically not.
So would you say, in your opinion, that the parking that they provide is convenience because of the proximity to the ticket booth?
Hundred percent. It's not, it's not necessary for spooky world operations.
Do you have any idea how many spots are on the Mel's property if you exhausted all options?
I don't know if it's off my head. We talked years ago, like, you know, we've been doing it since 2008. So I can't say that exactly.
Because when I, when I add up what I find on the sheet, I'm at about 139.
No, 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 we, we have, we have seven or 800 parking spaces with the back field.
Can I ask a question here? Where's the access to that back field? Is it, is it south of these?
Yes.
Okay, so this, the map with the, that was highlighted with the access points with the driveways, it should have another red driveway south of the four properties to access that back field. So that whole back field is used as parking and that's another, it's actually another driveway that's currently being, being used. So that should have been highlighted.
Any other questions for Attorney Prohlman?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? I believe we're in opposition to the application. Anybody else with?
No, I, I don't need it. I can take it back if you want.
Anyone else with questions? Did you want to make any final comments before we close public input?
Uh, yes, I could just respond to some of the, the points that were brought up. I won't go back through the, the variance criteria because I've already made that argument. But I will just bring up a few particular? I won't go back through the, the variance criteria because I've already made that argument, but I will just bring up a few particulars that was brought up. The issue of expanding a, a non-conforming uses was claimed. We're here tonight to request a variance to cure the non-conforming. That is what we're asking for, is permission to do that. As was talked about, we have a tentative agreement with Mel's and they said they are not for it, but they're not objecting for what that is worth. And the claim that we're trying to leverage the prior use for our hardship, that is not the, the reason that was presented. It's to show that in the past, this, the issues from this have been limited. Granted, there was that letter from the police chief that I asked my client and she doesn't remember ever seeing that. But that is part of what we're going to be going before the planning board for a site plan review to talk about issues like that. We would, I'm sure my client would be willing to get some feedback from the police chief if needed and talk about ways to make her operation better than it is. And, the, one of the other claims was that if you grant this variance, what's to stop the other neighbors from granting the variance? As the board knows, each property is meant to be looked at in its own right and a stand on its own merit. The claim that there's this concern about potential future variance is coming before this board, that's not part of the variance criteria. As I said, this property is unique because of its location to, to Mel's, the access points and the ease of access. There are other properties that are farther down Charles Bancroft Highway that don't have the same type of access points. I believe in, in terms of this use issue too, this is a commercial zone, it's a residence in a commercial zone. So to say that it is going to substantially change the area to allow this parking, as I said during my initial presentation, there are plenty of other parking areas that have similar uses. This is about this particular property in terms of the surrounding area. So, thank you.
Any further questions?
I do. The parking that would go in the front, in the back, what's the proximity to the house? How close to the house do the cars park?
I don't know the option. Um, I don't, um, maybe.
Two hundred feet.
How would you, two hundred, yeah, oh.
From the house?
I, we use that, we do not park right up to the house. We park the, in front of the gazebo.
Mm-hmm.
And we have to make sure we're off our subject, so.
Right, and again, these are issues, the number of cars and all these issues that you heard in the objection, those are all planning board issues. We're here for the, the use in particular, so we can parse all that out with the planning board.
Well, I mean, I'm trying to justify a reasonable reason to grant this and with the surrounding, with surrounding the whole property with cars, how, how does a fire truck get in there? How does a rescue truck get in there if someone has a heart attack at the back of the property?
The front driveway is completely open as well as there's a full side driveway that is open. There's plenty of space for any fire or ambulance to get in and turn around. It's all open in the middle. We just park around the outskirts.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else? Would you mind just reiterating for me your position on the hardship?
Sure. So the hardship prong is owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties of the area. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance and the, excuse me, specific application to this property. The property is in the commercial zone, it is a residential property and the property is being used as a residence, but it directly abuts the Spooky World area, so it doesn't change the overall character of the neighborhood and there is no impact on the health, safety and welfare, which is the basic premise of the zoning ordinance. As my client just said, there is ways in and out to safely go through. There is, they will agree to the same condition that was during, that was part of the last approval, that there will be no one on Charles Bancroft Highway. Heard a nice presentation from Attorney Pearlman about the, the proposed fence area that we have a tentative agreement for to push people in the correct direction. And the second element of the hardship prong is the proposed use is reasonable. It's reasonable because, again, it is a commercial area, there is ample space to get cars in and out of this, this lot. I know it isn't something that was problematic for the objectors, but I will bring it up again, that this has happened in the past and there has been few limited issues. Again, I know the, the letter came up, my client and I were talking about that and she would gladly deal with those kind of issues as they come up for the planning board review. And so, yes, the proposed use is reasonable because the property can maintain such a use.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? Somebody wants to make a motion to close public input?
I think we have someone else who wants to speak.
Absolutely. Could you just state your name and address?
Rose Medina, four forty-two Charles Bancroft Highway. So last year, we did have a problem in the front with the cars, but it was because somebody that was here, that he admitted it, parked in front of the street and started taking pictures. So prior to last year, we never had any problems before, but last year, somebody literally parked right in front of the, our driveway, stopped traffic from going back and forward just to take pictures of everything. And that was one of the big problem. I don't wanna point finger, but the person is here, but that was one of the big problem we had last year. It happened one day. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, I think somebody made a motion to close public input.
Make a motion to close public input.
And somebody seconded that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, thoughts, questions, comments, concerns? I actually did put up an aerial view of the property too, so you can see that.
I mean, I wasn't here when this was heard before, so I understand that I only have what's affirmed today. We've heard that Spooky World doesn't need additional parking, so this would be, I guess, on its own merits. This would be its own business as well.
Correct.
That's correct.
But if the house is used as residential, I don't, I don't see how we can allow parking. We don't have a parking ordinance anyway. So I, I agree completely that parking should be an accessory use to a commercial aspect.
Anybody else?
There's, it's an interesting situation where at certain parts of the year, these residents are inundated with like hundreds of cars and their, their residential location has now become this, this very busy activity. And it seems reasonable for them to be able to leverage their location to, to, um, to benefit from, from this situation, which in many cases would be a hardship for any residential next to such a, such a location. So to me, that's a reasonable use of a commercial property is to allow temporary parking.
Do we know what that back lot is zoned, the one, the field that they farms and then park in?
I think it's the same, isn't it?
I think it's the same. I think up there should be northern commercial.
It's commercial too, and so because it's owned by Mel's, they don't need a variance to park there because it's ancillary or something like that.
Part of their, their business.
It's part of their business. You know, I mean, I will say that they will be, they're surrounded by cars that are being parked right now. Right, so, you know, there, well, there'll be cars on two sides of the, at the moment.
Did you wanna make any comments?
I think the fact that Mel's doesn't need the parking is the one thing that is leading to me, um, the necessity for the variance to have parking in the lot.
I would say that because of the new pathway and the fence and the cooperation, like if Mel's really was against this, I would be more likely to be against it.
As in a butter.
As in a butter and they are affected, if they didn't get, grant them access through that fence, they would have to go to the highway and there'd be no way that I would even think about approving it.
And to that, I would respond, I would caution the board to be very careful about relying on private easements. I think the variance needs to stand on its own and if it's meets the five criteria, then it meets the five criteria. Because if we say, oh, you're gonna have this easement, they change it, I mean, we're not in the position, we're not gonna be reviewing the easement. You know what I mean? We're not reviewing it for safety, we're not reviewing it for capacity, we're not reviewing it for anything. So I would have concerns with analyzing the fact pattern of an easement that we don't have the jurisdiction or the ability to review.
We could put it as a stipulation of our, our variances.
We, we, we could, but we're not reviewing it, so we can say they need to get an easement for Mel's for access. Well, what is that easement gonna look like? If it doesn't come back to us to review? So what if it's an easement that's right at Charles Bancroft Highway and it's going, you know what I mean? So we don't know and that's not this board's purview to review easements. So I, I find that a little bit problematic about going down that path with our analysis. So I do have concerns on probably all five criteria for this particular variance. My opinion is that most of the criteria was not granted, I mean, was not met. So if I start with the first one, public interest, I do have safety concerns for taking a residential use. This is still a residential use, we're not changing it from a residential use to a commercial property. We're now doing a dual use, which I don't even know if that's even allowed by our zoning, to have a residential use and then adding in a commercial. And we're having a hundred and fifty cars. That's a lot of cars. We have a pond in the back, we have people walking there. I know the pond's gonna be fenced in. I have concerns of, you know, I know there was a letter from the police chief, how that whole operation's gonna work, traffic backing up, there's no need for it, but the fact that there's no need for it is part of the analysis, but I think public safety, we have a residential use. If they were saying, we're gonna take this and get rid of the residential use and it's just gonna be commercial, it would be a completely different analysis. That's not what's happening here. We have a home, we have a residence, we have parking going in all different ways, a hundred and fifty cars when I'm looking at that. I have no level of comfort of safely putting a hundred and fifty cars on a residential property. So I do have public safety concerns and the spirit of the ordinance, again, we're getting into the use. We don't have parking as a permitted use anywhere in our zoning, so it's not allowed in any use and that's done, I believe, for a reason. And I know Steve, you said, you know, it's usually accessory. That's not what we have here. Our primary use is residential, we're adding in a commercial parking lot to a residential use. That, in my opinion, does not coincide with the spirit.
Can I add on to that?
You're absolutely.
If this was a commercial use, there was, there's no way there would be a hundred and fifty cars allowed there. Not, not by that layout.
No, and I mean, and there's access ways, there's safety concerns. I mean, I know that spills over to the planning board, but we still have that ability to opine on public safety and issues. So that's the second prong. The third is the Balancing Act, the substantial justice. This property owner is using the property as a resident. That's what it's been used for, for years. By, she's not at any loss, she's just trying to add a commercial use on a residential property, which I think is true primary uses, which I think is not in line with any spirit or intent. So I think with that, the public is at a great loss if we were to allow this variance to move forward. Values of surrounding properties, we haven't really talked about that. I don't know what the board's feel is. I do think that there's, it's a residential use. Again, it's just during Spooky World, so there wasn't any evidence presented either way on that particular point by the applicant, whether or not those were affected. And the hardship, I do not feel that they successfully demonstrated a hardship. I did ask them to repeat that for a reason and that was to, so I could be clear as to what they believe the hardship was and the reason that, as I understood it, is to have a residential use in a, on a commercial piece of property. That's not a hardship. It would have to be something unique to the land. I didn't hear anything offered tonight that would say that it was unique and if it was unique, how that would relate to us granting a commercial use in a residential lot. And I do not think that is a reasonable use of this property to have a hundred and fifty cars. It's all like that. So with that, we can go through the five points. So the first one is public interest. Any thoughts on that?
I think it is not in the public's interest to grant this.
Why?
Because you're adding parking to a, we'll call it a residential use and it's surrounded by residential uses as well, except for the one side.
Anybody else? I'm gonna reiterate what I said, you know, there's public safety concerns, access getting out, parking a hundred and fifty cars, the ability for police and fire to get in and out, the ability for people to walk safely, people traveling on Charles Bancroft Highway, the potential for that, so I do have a lot of public safety concerns. The spirit of the ordinance, any thoughts on that? The spirit coincides with one, as we talked about before, so I would reiterate everything that I, um, said for the public in, interest. I do have those safety concerns about allowing that. In our town zoning does not allow parking anywhere at all and particularly, the spirit is not to, in my opinion, not to allow parking on a resi, with a residential use.
I would agree. I'm supporting anything on the property itself.
All right, third one is substantial justice, that's the balancing act. The loss to the public and the gain to the applicant. Or the loss to the applicant, however you wanna flip it. I don't think that there's any loss to the applicant by not allowing parking. It's a residential use, that's how they're using it. I think the gain, the loss to the public is great, given all the concerns I would just spoke about.
I would say that, you know, they are impacted by Spooky World with all the noise and, and all that, and so they do have to do, deal with that. And so I would say some of this gain is, you know, they would be gaining some money from having to deal with that noise, you know, the old.
The values of surrounding property. Uh, we did hear concerns from a neighbor that they believe that that would negatively affect their operations. Any thoughts on that?
I don't think it would have any more impact than the impact the event already has on the neighborhood.
Yeah, Spooky World is already impacting them.
I don't think it changes anything.
And the last one is the hardship. The first thing we have to look at is if the property is unique. I do not think the property, anything was put forward by the applicant demonstrating uniqueness as necessary for this variance criteria.
I didn't see anything unique.
So there's nothing unique, so it would be fair to apply our zoning to this property.
So they presented their view of being in a commercial zone, it's not unique, but they're actually, the use is currently a resident and so it would be unique.
That's, they said when I asked, why is the property unique and the response, as I understood it, was we have a residential use in a
Commercial zone.
Commercial zone. That's what they contend is unique. And the proposed use is a reasonable one? I, I don't believe it is. I would say it's not reasonable to allow a hundred and fifty parking spaces in a residential, with a residential use. I would say it's not reasonable to allow a hundred and fifty parking spaces in a residential, with a residential use. Any other thoughts? All right, I'll make a motion on. I'm gonna make a motion in case number zero nine one eight two zero two three dash one, to deny the applicant's request for a variance from LZO Article eight hundred, section eight zero one, to permit parking in the northern commercial district where parking is not a permitted use. Ronisha Bushadhina, owner and applicant for forty-six Charles Bancroft Highway, map twenty, lot thirteen, as the applicant has failed to meet criteria one, two, three, and five, as discussed in our deliberations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so we got four, one, zero, so that application was denied. So for the next one, do you wanna proceed? Do you have the ability to withdraw the next application? I'm not telling you what to do, you just had, you just saw the board's deliberation on this one. Do you wanna proceed forward with the next one?
Can I have a minute to speak with Mike?
Of course you can. Yep, so we'll take a five-minute break.
How's everything going?
Crazy busy up here.
Yeah?
Yeah, how about you?
Not too bad, not too bad.
I get to see Gabe and Nicole, wait, I get to see Gabe and Nicole in the house.
It's crazy, yeah. Oh, yeah, we are.
So various.
Yeah, no, I, I, I was happy for them. It seems like you mentioned.
Wait, one second.
Sure.
Yep. So we'll take a back online.
Excuse me.
All right, we are back, I'm gonna call the next case. It's case number zero nine one eight two zero two three dash two. This is another rehearing request, a variance from LZO Article eight hundred, section eight zero one, to permit parking in the northern commercial district where parking is not a permitted use. Rose Medina, owner and applicant, four four two Charles Bancroft Highway, map twenty, lot twelve. And you will be presenting, but I believe you also are requesting to withdraw this application?
Yes, Mr. Medina would like to withdraw the application.
Yep, just state your name, please.
Sean Dunphy, from Cronin, Bisson, and Zalinski in Manchester.
And you're representing the owner and applicant?
Yes, Mr. Medina, four four two Bancroft, Charles Bancroft Highway.
And you're asking to withdraw the application?
Yes.
Okay, the application is withdrawn. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have a request for a rehearing. This is a variance from LZO Article three ten, to construct a structure within the fifty-foot building setback from the front property line in a residential district. The name of the applicant is Michael Velucci, the owner of the property is Michael and Christine Velucci. Location of the property is six Mulberry Lane, map eight, lot one seven five. So I'm not quite sure if you understand the rehearing request process. It's not a new hearing, it's just going to the board, so we're not taking public input. It's just the opportunity for the board to review your request for a rehearing and to decide if the board made a mistake, or they need to correct the record, they did something like that. So we're gonna discuss that internally, you're welcome to sit there, but there's not gonna be any dialogue between the board and you.
Okay, so the additional information is not relevant?
Nope.
Understood.
All right, so we have a request for a rehearing.
So, so the rehearing is on exactly the information that we heard the first time?
Yes, so.
The applicant can submit information.
He already did, he submitted a rehearing request. So now we have the rehearing request, and it's for the board to decide. He already submitted his rehearing request package, and now we'll decide whether or not, based on that submittal, there's enough for us, for the board to consider to rehear the case or not. If we decide to rehear it, then there will be a new hearing where you'll.
I just have a clarifying point, that the rehearing document that I produced in the request, there was not specifically a formal hearing or formal document. So I gave information in to the clerk.
Yes.
My understanding, and I just wanna be clear that you all have that information, that's all I meant.
So that was submitted to the clerk? Yep, so that was submitted, and then we take that and we look at it as a board. And we look at it, and the standard is, you know, was, did we make a mistake?
Understood.
Was there information that we may have misapplied, or did we didn't, you know, view in the right way, or anything else like that? So it's basically an internal discussion with the board. And if we feel that we did, and we need to correct the record. Um, as you heard, there was other ones where there was a notice thing that happened, that we needed to go back. So if we say yes to the rehearing request, then you get another brand-new hearing.
I get another opportunity.
Right, if we say no, then you do not. And at that point in time, you have a couple of options, you can appeal that decision to the Housing Appeals Board or to the Land Court, you have a couple of legal litigation options. Or you can submit an application that's substantially different from the first application, and that would give you another opportunity to appear in front of us.
Understood, thank you for your time, and the explanation of.
Yeah, no, absolutely, no, I wanna make sure that you understand exactly what we're doing. All right, so we have that rehearing request. Anybody have any questions, concerns? So again, as I just stated, this is, the applicant has put forth what he believes that the board made a mistake. And he has that right to do that. Every decision that the board makes is, the applicant has a right to file a rehearing request back to us. And it's an opportunity for us to correct any mistakes that we believe we have made. If we believe we did not make it, then we would deny that request. So, let's go to. So we have his June thirteenth submittal. And again, the standard has to be, he, it's not an opportunity for him to present his case to us all over again. It's an opportunity for him to point out where he made a mistake. So he can't just say, well, if he's saying the same thing that he said with the original hearing, that's not how it's done. It's, what did we do that was incorrect? Like, how do we misapply facts, or misinterpret the law, or just something like that? Not just going back and saying the same thing.
Uh-huh. So this application states that he's gonna change the size, which, does that not?
That, no, that, that would be, yep, that would be his opportunity, if he's, he is back to us based on what he originally said. So if he's gonna change the size and make his application substantially different, he has to file a new application with us. So this, again, is only like, we, oops, we made a mistake, and we need to correct those mistakes. So he needed to tell us somewhere in here where we made a mistake. Like, if we, you know, said, well, you know, whatever the case may be, did he tell us that we made a mistake? And if he did, does the board feel that they did, and they need to correct that? Just taking a peek at it. So we have it dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. I'm not seeing anything that he did not say to us last time.
Am I able to not speak at all?
Yeah, there was, there was an argument for similar-sized structures, and we said that it altered the, you know, the character of the homes. And the houses that he used were not on the street or very close, you know. They may be close distance-wise on talent, but they're not on Mulberry or whatever the Foxwoods.
And again, a lot of this is stuff that we already received and we reviewed. So I don't see where this board made a mistake in its original decision. Any thoughts to that?
So I, I went to the town four times and asked them how to do this process, and they told me just to write a letter to appeal. Nobody had any idea to formally do the process we're doing right now. Which is, you just have to tell you guys how to make this, how you made a mistake. But this is what we thought we were supposed to do.
I think one of the issues may be the fact that we were in between building inspectors at the time. I can tell you my process if you'd like.
It's supposed to be engaging with the public.
Sorry.
That's why you see what you're seeing right now.
The clerk actually called your previous building inspector to get clarification on the process, because it was unclear to the public what the process was for a rehearing or objection to this claim.
Is that new?
Yeah. And, and for that, so we can't consider that, I, I.
Do you see anything?
Oh, I'm just reading the thing, and, and the only thing that pops out is a decision to decrease the size of the garage.
But that's new information, which.
Exactly, so, so, and that's what I'm trying to tell you, not talking to them.
Yeah, you're right, 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 yeah, so, so that's not.
Yeah, so it sounds like.
So if they wanted to submit.
That's, that's the change.
If, if they wanted to submit a new application with a smaller building and substantially change it. So again, and when it comes back to us, we have to make that determination that that application is substantially different from the first. So if it's, I'm just gonna be facetious, if there was two thousand square feet structure, and they came back and were doing one thousand one hundred and ninety-five, well, no. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, so it has to be substantially different. So when we get that application, we need to make that determination as to whether or not it's substantially different from the first application.
But the difference is that you, like, the, the, so the easement was the issue, right? And that was one of the things, and then you referenced the amount of, the size of the structure, which was miscalculated in numerous occasions. So there's many, many different things in this case that was not true in the previous hearing or presented that way. And I'm telling you, I gave you documentation per the city that you reside in, that this was the formal process and it was accepted as though that was the case. If it was some other process, there's no form, there's no objection letter, there's no nothing. So I provided the actual documentation on the merit that there was misclarifications that took place during that hearing last night. And there's no way that you can even read that, that fast.
We've, uh, the board has received this document, so. Any concerns of that we made a mistake? No?
No.
So I am going to comment on one thing, that I am aware of concerns about the process, than the, the town staff not understanding the process for a rehearing. And I am aware of that, so I am sympathetic to that. So I would not be opposed for us allowing the applicant to supplement this motion for a rehearing based on this discussion, and continue it until next month to give them an opportunity now that I think they're aware of what the process is, to give them that opportunity to supplement.
So.
So if they.
Hold on, you wanna supplement the rehearing, or you want a new application?
No, nope, so they have a motion for rehearing. And I am aware, when the applicant came into Town Hall to file their application, there was confusion for them when they were filing it. So maybe the process wasn't understood by town staff, maybe it wasn't understood by the applicant. Again, that's not our burden to necessarily, you know, do that. But I am sympathetic to the fact that when they came to Town Hall, they may not have understood the process, and town staff may not have properly explained that process to them. So they filed their request for a rehearing, and now that they've listened to our discussion, and they understand what the standard is for this rehearing, to allow them the opportunity, if they feel that they wanted to add stuff to this motion for rehearing of ways that we made a mistake, that they didn't know that's what they had to do before. I'm not opposed to allowing them to do that and continuing the rehearing for another month to give them an opportunity that they wanted to supplement this request for a rehearing, to say, now that I understand what the process is, I wanna tell the board that they did this wrong, and let them do that. And at the same time, they may say, well, we're gonna file another application to show the smaller garage. And they can do both if they want to, that's, I'm not gonna tell them how to do it. But I, I personally would want to give the applicant that opportunity to supplement this rehearing request if that's what they choose.
I agree.
I'll, I'll fine with that.
So then.
I make the motion to allow the continuation of this case until our next business meeting.
Which is?
We're in July, so it'd be August.
All right, let's just get the date, 'cause we need to do a date certain.
I know the date.
I believe it's nine, uh, twentieth?
Uh, August nineteenth?
Nineteenth?
That would be to allow the applicant time to supplement.
Supplement.
His motion for a rehearing based on the board's discussion.
That's the motion, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
All right, and that's.
How's it, Jeff?
Yeah?
First off, it's very therapy, I have work to do that. When would you want, uh, you submit a deadline?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yep, we're gonna get to that. Thank you. So we have a motion.
I'll second that.
On a second. When would we want them to, uh, submit?
What's the deadline for a normal submittal, um, before the next business meeting?
I would give them, until August fifth would be, that's two, actually, one, two, that's three weeks from now. Like, is the board, I mean, we had the motion, that gives us two weeks to review it when it comes in.
That's pretty, should be preferred.
So that would be August fifth.
Fifth. Great idea.
For them to submit. All right, so we have, we're adding that to your motion.
Yes, please.
Um, any other discussion?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you. The formal process is just for clarifications, that I, I am sure I can ask questions on it, just for, on the submittal, nothing else.
Go ahead.
So on the submittal, a clarification, is there a submit, specific submittal in which the way that you need to be provided to you? That's my first question.
No, so we don't have a form, so they were right in telling you that there's no form document.
I did get a form, that was the problem. I didn't get a form, that was the problem.
Well, well, and, and that's correct, because they.
Yeah, we ended up all right.
Right, because there, there's not a form? So I think that's, may have been part of the confusion that you experienced, so there's not. So again, um, the standard that you use for a rehearing is the board, basically the board made this may, did they take facts and misapply it? Or did they use the wrong facts? Or was there a legal error that the board made? Or did we not use the information that you gave us that was correct? And there's actually a statute on point for that, I don't have it off the top of my head. But, but, but there is.
That's fair enough.
So, so what we're allowing now to happen is for you to take your rehearing request that you filed and add to that.
And or decide whether you wanna do a, a new submittal, a, a brand new application.
We said we could do both, what, right?
You, you can do both, you absolutely can.
Yes, right, yeah, so, yeah, you could do both, sorry, yeah.
You absolutely can. And again, the second application, if you decide to move forward with the second, it has to be substantially different from the first.
And how is that defined, just for clarification?
It's discretion on the board.
Understood.
I mean, again, it's, the word substantially is in front of different, so it's not just different, it has to be substantially different. And part of the analysis with that is that you need to address the concerns that the board had in the original application. So if you think about the concerns that the board had in the original application, if you're addressing those with your new application, then that's enough to trigger us to have jurisdiction over that matter.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Just for clarification on their behalf. If they've submitted new stuff, like they did for this, thinking that they could for the rehearing, okay? If they submit a new application with the same packet, is that substantially different?
That's basically what.
So I'm not necessarily.
So like what they originally presented at the meeting where they were denied, okay? They've now submitted this package thinking that they could for the rehearing, okay? Which, if they apply for a new application and they use this packet, instead of trying to prove that the board did something wrong and they go that route, is that substantially different?
Well, we'd have to look at that, I'd have to look at that and say, what is in this? And again, substantially different, it's, you're usually gonna look at the size, did they make it smaller? Did they address some of the concerns that we had? And if they did, that would be enough to trigger.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure.
And again, like, I don't know, because I'm not gonna judge this as a, you know, this was a rehearing request. So I'm not gonna, you know, for, prejudge any type of application, because we don't have it.
I just wanted to make sure on their behalf that if they submitted this package.
I'm not, I'm not gonna say if they submitted that package, but anything is. Here, they would have to submit a new variance package, make their arguments, it would come before us, we would, before we do anything, we would look at it, we'd talk about, how is this substantially different, and then we move forward for that. But I'm not gonna comment on whether that would be sufficient to trigger anything.
Yep.
So there's two things at play, basically I have the, the rehearing is just in relationship to the merit of, of the previous hearing.
Correct.
Right, and I have to provide clerical information that shows that there was something that was misunderstood or not understood in some way, we'll just leave it.
We, we, basically the board made a mistake.
Yep, I understand that.
Yep.
And then you decide whether that is true or not.
Yep.
And then from there, I go to another hearing.
Nope, from there.
All right, then we'll.
Well, let me stop you, so from there, so yep, you come back to us, we see, did we make, basically, did we make a mistake? I'm just being general, did we make a mistake? If we say, yes, we did, then it goes back out, like it's a brand new hearing, similar to the other cases that we had tonight. We renotice the abutters, we do all that, and you have a brand new hearing, you come back to us and, and you're submitting, you know, basically what you submitted before, but you get to present it again. You can't come back to me and, and make the changes that you were just making, that you wanna make, like for size. So it's basically the same application, but you just get a new hearing. Make sense? You're laughing, I'm not sure if you're laughing because you don't understand or.
I, I, on, on its merit, it makes sense, it's, the process is just confusing. I'm, I'm smiling because it's, it's like, I'm just absorbing.
No, no, and, and I.
Taking in the data for like, just from a principle of time.
Nope, I understand that, it's, and it's.
Even if I made a mistake, if, what you're.
I'm telling you, you're gonna be.
Just my interpretation when I'm taking is that I should just refile it, is what it comes down to, right?
And I think that would be a, a nice thought, and if you refile, again, but it's gonna be substantially different, you gotta hit that trigger. So you, so you gotta address.
Substantially different, I'm out of the slow peasement, that's substantially different.
Well, I'm not gonna tell you, I'm not gonna tell you if it is or if it isn't.
No, no, I know, I'm just.
It's gonna come, it has to, it has to come back to the board and the board has to look at that.
Should we put in that, in that bag?
Maybe, yes, that's, that's.
That, that, that was submitted as a rehearing request.
For sure, understood.
Okay, so you had the opportunity to supplement, you had the opportunity to file a, a new application that's substantially different from the first one. So you basically have two avenues in front of you that you can, uh, proceed with.
Sure.
Make sense?
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. So we have case number. Wait, so I'm just gonna go for that, so, John, you made the motion, who seconded that motion, was that you, Zach?
Yes, that was.
All right. We have case number zero seven one five two zero two four dash one, a variance from LZO Article three ten to construct a structure within the fifty foot building setback from the front property line in a residential district. Name of applicant owner of property is James and Margaret Norton. Location of property, twenty four Woodhawk Way, map eight, lot ninety seven, and who will be presenting?
Could we both?
You should, just state your name.
That's how we rule, it agrees together.
All right, I just need for you to state your name and addresses.
Uh, James Norton, twenty four Woodhawk Way.
Yep.
And I'm Margaret Norton from twenty four Woodhawk Way.
All right, proceed, please.
We are looking to put a farmer's porch on the front of our house. Our, our house is really close to the street as it is, the way it was built. Looking to come out, uh, eight feet from the house, um, which will then. The way the house sits, it's kinda cockeyed on the lot, so one piece of it would be, right now, the house is thirty two feet to the road. The other side is forty five feet to the road. So we're going to, uh, where's that letter? So then, it would be, it would encroach fifteen feet, I think, on one side and twenty eight feet on the other side.
I'm just pulling up, uh.
On the permit, the building permit denial.
Yep.
Do you have a set of stairs on the front, well.
We have a set of stairs.
There is a set of stairs, yes.
All right, here we are, right?
There is, yeah.
That's part of the reason why we're doing it, the stairs are falling apart and those beautiful trees on the end are all dying.
So the porch, did you tell us the size of the porch?
Uh, it's thirty five feet long, which is the size of the house coming out eight feet.
So thirty five feet long and eight feet in width.
Yeah, and the eight feet is the part that's the problem.
How far do the stairs come up from the house?
Uh.
Six maybe?
Yeah, maybe six feet from, right now, yeah.
And those have been there since we've lived there.
Right now, if you see the walkway that's there.
Yeah.
That's basically eight feet out, just about eight feet from that walkway.
So, so this walkway right here is eight feet, where my pressure is?
Yeah, the edge of that is, it's about, it's almost nine, but, yeah.
Something like that. Okay.
Do you have the, uh, overhead, can you?
Overhead.
The.
Oh, that's the.
Yeah, the aerial view, I mean, that way you can, you might be able to see it. You had it on the last one.
I'm getting it.
No, yeah.
Computers nice and fast.
Better than it was last month.
So, all right, so here's the overhead.
Yeah. I just thought you might see the, you know, this, this, this space of the, uh, of the walkway, right? Yeah. It is weird that it's on an angle like that.
Yeah, it is.
And not, and not squared, and not squared to the road.
Yeah, the lot is kinda crazy.
No.
Nope.
We don't know why it was done like that.
And it's, it's kind of on a straightaway there, there's a little curve before it, to the right.
All right, do you wanna go through your five points, please?
Yes.
I think my chickens ran.
You can do that part, I can't read.
Uh, the first one, the variance will not be contrary to public interest because it adds to the aesthetics of our home. Also, cows are enjoyably outdoors, there's, there's nothing better than being outside in a field. Um, and it, there's no issues to public interest. Number two, the spirit of the ordinance, ordinance is observed because applying for the variance ensures we comply with the ordinance. If we don't, then we would be illegal. Um, number three, substantial justice is done because applying for the variance ensures we're following the rules and regulations of the town. Number four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished because it adds to the value not only of our property, but I do believe to the entire neighborhood. And five, little enforcement of the provisions, unnecessary, I mean, no, I mean, there really wouldn't be any hardship to anyone except we couldn't enjoy being outside in a field, I guess that would be really for our hardship, but. In my husband's dream, you know, when we bought the house thirty years ago, that's all he wanted was a front porch. And I said, no, 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 now I can't fight him on it anymore, after thirty years, I've given in.
So that means now you think it's a good idea?
Well, once the kid got through college, now, you know.
Yeah, he, yeah, he's beaten me after thirty years, so now, yes, I think it's a good idea, it took a long time.
All right, any questions from the board to the applicants?
So you, you currently have a fence, um, along the front of that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Both sides of the driveway.
Correct, which were there when, when we moved in thirty one years ago.
Well, not the same.
Well, not the same one, we replaced them.
I don't see anything from neighbors, did we have anything from neighbors?
I do not see anything.
Have you had discussions with your neighbors by any chance?
Yeah, I talked to Steve across the street. Says, once it's up, he wants to come sit on it, haven't been. So when was this built?
The house?
Seventy nine?
Yeah, seventy nine, I think, we moved in in ninety four.
Ninety three.
Ninety three, yeah, ninety three.
I'm ready for, do you wanna see a paper copy of this guy?
Yeah, I've got it here, I've got it too, yeah.
You wanna see this? Any questions for the applicants?
So it's gonna be, it's gonna come out eight feet from the house, so you'll be twenty four feet from the.
Well, 'cause it's at an angle, it's different on either side, right?
Yeah, right, on the closest point.
So one side, I think, I'm trying to see here.
In his letter.
That's right here, do you see it in there?
Says fifteen and twenty eight, yeah, twenty eight.
Yeah, fifteen and twenty eight, yeah.
Jeff had it in his letter.
Fifteen, wait, thirty two minus eight, four.
Yes, so Jeff's letter says, the proposed porch would encroach fifteen feet into the front setback at the left corner of the proposed porch and twenty eight feet at the right corner.
It's the left side.
Okay, so it'll be twenty.
That's what it is. It's this side, not this side.
Depending how many feet from the street.
Yeah. I understand.
So really, really kinda looking at that.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for the applicants? All right, I'm gonna open the public input, if there's anybody in favor of the application, just be. There's no one here, anybody in opposition? There's nobody here, anybody with questions? And there's no one here, any further comments from the applicants?
Just that you didn't make my husband really happy. Cause he'd actually be right about something.
All right, so with that, if somebody wants to make a motion to close public input?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so thoughts, concerns?
I don't have any concerns, I've been thinking about this, they already encroach on the setbacks, the stairs already encroach on the setback. The house, and personally don't think it would. That change that dynamic any more than it does already, but.
Any thoughts, comments?
I think caves look beautiful, a farmer's porch.
Amen. I think, public safety, they do have a fence already, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I think that's fine, it is, I know each one sits on its own, but we had a similar situation on the same road with houses that were too close to the, um, to the street already.
Um, I do have concerns, I think the one that George are referencing is, we didn't make it further encroaching into the setback, some of the other ones. This one, we are, we have a house that's already nonconf, a house that's already within the setback, unfortunately, um, for no fault of the applicants, but I think adding on, um, the farmer's ports furthers that nonconformity and that encroachment and I, I don't believe that meets the criteria. But I may be in the minority from what I'm hearing, so that's fine too.
I think with the fence in the front, it actually establishes like a defined space for the property. I don't know that putting a porch on the front of that is gonna hinder anything other than the number of how much closer to the street it is. There's obviously no opposition to it. Or at least we haven't heard it and they're not here.
Just for instructional values, if there's lots of opposition or none, I mean, we can consider it, but just when you're thinking about that, even if there isn't any opposition, you still wanna make sure that they're meeting the five criteria.
No, I understand, I mean, their, their front stairs already, the whole thing's already in the area.
Yeah.
It, it would be enlarging it, but.
That's, so I'm thinking I'm in the minority, so if I'm in the minority, um, then somebody else wanna lead that discussion? Or am I not in the minority? I guess I'll ask that first.
Um, I believe you might be in the minority.
Okay. All right, and then, nope, and I understand that, so then, somebody wanna lead that discussion? I mean, I can too, so I can do it, does somebody else wanna try?
Do you have any input?
I'm kinda on the fence on this one, I, um.
So you gotta go through the five points to make sure that, and give reasons why you believe it should be granted. I mean, I know what we're saying, oh, it's, you know, what the board's saying is all and well, but now you have to put pen to paper and say why they meet it per the five variance criteria. And I'm not in a position to do that, so. Again, my reasoning is, is we have a nonconforming structure already and we're adding more nonconformity and putting it even closer to the setback. And then you have Steve who has his position exactly contrary to mine, so. I'll take an informal poll of the board.
Well, yeah, it's, it's hard because we, earlier tonight, we did not allow a structure, you know, within the fifte, I mean, it was so close. It was, it was a separate case and I understand they all stand on their own.
I'm gonna take an informal poll, um, my thought is I would, uh, be voting to deny this application.
I would vote in favor. I would vote in favor.
I think I would support.
Support?
Yeah. I, I can see both, but I, I think in this case, I, I would support it as well.
So there we go, all right, so, well, it's the, uh, I mean, I, I, I can still lead the discussion, I'm just thinking if somebody else wants to just to have some fun.
Do I have to write it down or do you write it down?
I'll write it down.
All right.
All right, go for it.
I'll give it a go.
All right, so you gotta go through the five, right?
So.
Not be contrary to public interest.
Yep, so the public interest.
The public interest, it would not be contrary to the public interest because it's attached to the home, it's already a nonconforming use. And it would be, in my opinion, a minimal addition to the nonconformity.
Do you wanna talk about the, uh, health, safety and welfare and how, if it will alter the character of the neighborhood?
I don't think it will alter the character of the neighborhood at all, I don't think it will be a safety issue at all.
With no effect to safety and health at the.
Right, I mean, right, it's already fenced, so they have a, you know, visual and physical barrier.
Okay.
So it's not impeding access to the property at all.
All right, so number two, spirited ordinance is observed because they need to replace their front steps and. they need to replace their front steps anyway, and this is, I don't know how to answer this one correctly.
So, the spirit is, it, it kinda piggybacks off of one. So, you wanna talk about the health, safety, and welfare, if there's any concerns with that?
There's no, I, I would say no concerns with the health or safety, and I think that it would fix an issue they have with the existing steps they have on there now.
And it would improve the character of the neighborhood.
I think it would improve it as well, yes.
That's good.
Okay, and the spirit of the fifty-foot setback is for safety, that's why you want the houses pushed back fifty feet from the roadway. Any concerns with that?
Not in this case, because it's already defined with a fenced-in area. So, I feel that any intrusion that it would give, the fence already does more so.
Okay. All right. The third is substantial justice.
Uh, I believe substantial justice would be met, allowing them to add to their home and enhance the character of their home and the neighborhood, and replace their issuing front steps.
Yeah, without adversely affecting the safety and health of the.
Absolutely not, neighborhood.
So, I'm gonna re-guide the board's discussion, it's a balancing act, so you wanna look at the loss to the applicant compared to the gain to the public. So, it has to tip one way, so, usually the gain to the public, the public gains by keeping the zoning intact, like, that's a good thing. We wanna keep it intact, but if we do that, is the loss so great that it doesn't make sense to do that? So, you, you gotta balance an act, so you wanna be able to articulate that the loss to the applicant is greater than any gain to the public because, and then tell me why.
Oh, okay, 'cause I would say the loss to the public is minimal compared to the gain of the applicant.
Okay, we can, we can flip it, so, so you're gonna say the loss to the public, good.
Would be minimal.
Mm-hmm.
And the gain to the applicant would be beneficial, substantial, however you wanna word that one.
Because you're allowing them to use their property.
Correct.
Improve that he's right.
We're, 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 there's a couple of new members on the board here, so this is why we're going through it this way.
So, that's true. No, it's good, I think it's all good.
We're members in training.
So, it's all good.
Um.
All right, so, four.
So, number four.
Values of surrounding properties.
I think the values of the surrounding properties would be enhanced by the improvements to this property.
Yep, I agree.
And now, the fifth one is always the hardest, and that's the most difficult one, and that's the one that usually is what causes applications not to be granted because they have to say how their property is unique from other properties in the area. So, what is it about their property that makes it unique from other properties in the area that would justify granting them a variance compared to other properties in the area?
Their house is put at an angle, and is already located too close to the roadway.
And typically, the analysis goes to, like, the property itself, like, not the structure. So, what would it be about this particular property that makes it unique from the others?
The house is on an angle to the roadway, but that's.
About, about the property, that's the structure, talking about the property.
Well, the issue with the property is that the house is too close to the property line.
Okay, I mean, you can say that, I mean, that's.
It was, because it wasn't, it wasn't setback far enough to begin with.
Okay. Anybody else wanna add anything to that?
That is the hard thing, because there's not a whole lot more you can say about it.
Well, and that's why this is the hardest one, that people fail in. It's supposed to be what's unique about the property, not the building or the structure, what's uni- unique about the property.
Yes.
That makes it different from other properties in the area.
I, I, I can't get around the house, because you look at the ones that are budding it, and they all seem to be set further back. I don't know how else to answer that.
Yeah, it's the layout of the property, which is the structure, fortunately.
Oh, you know what it is? Your pool is located, uh, down the hill behind your house, isn't it? Right, so, your property is unique because, um, you're built, they, they could not put the house farther back because of the slope to your pool.
That's right.
All right, so, because of, that, that's not, no fault to you, but they didn't wanna put the house down in that hole, and so, because of, um, the slope behind your house with that pool, the house can only be located in that spot, and so that's the uniqueness to your, to your property.
I wasn't gonna give you the answer to the test, but that is the answer.
No one knows.
I think that's, I think that's the uniqueness. So, that's why it's, their house is so close to the road, because it's a very steep slope, um, to their pool behind their house, and so, it was forced to be located there before we had our setbacks, and so, I think that's the uniqueness.
All right, the proposed use is a reasonable one?
Thanks, Paul.
All right, so, there you have it. Anybody wanna make a motion? And if, when you make the motion, um, you want to make sure that we know how big the porch is gonna be and how much it's encroaching, so you can use, uh, Jeff's letter, two, um, as part of the motion. Do you have, do you have that?
Am I making the motion?
I don't know. I can make, I can make the motion, if you want me to.
Sure, why not?
All right. Let me see this. All right, so, I will make a motion in case number zero seven one five two zero two four to grant the applicant's request for a variance from Article three ten to construct a structure within the fifty-foot building setback from the front property line in a residential district. James and Margaret, Margaret Thorne, owners and applicant, twenty-four Woodhawk Way, Litchfield, New Hampshire, zero three zero five two, map eight, lot ninety-seven, with the condition that the porch encroach no more than.
I think it's fifteen feet in front setback.
Yep, so, it'll encroach no more than fifteen feet into, now, that's not, because of the front setback, because the house is already encroaching into that, right? So, fifteen feet into the front setback at the left corner of the proposed porch, and twenty-eight, and no more than twenty-eight feet at the right corner of the porch, does that make sense to everybody? Does that make sense to you folks?
It does. Um, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Are there any stairs coming off of this?
There is, I think, one step, yeah.
So, that's gonna be more.
Towards, wait, wait, where, towards the driveway, or is it off the front, off the very front?
Off the front. Yeah.
So, okay, that.
It would be inside the corner, though.
I know, but it wasn't, the way it's written is you're talking about the two corners, and you're not talking about the middle, so, um.
No, you're, you're making a very good point, so, the, the thing that we have to figure out is, so the stairs are gonna come off the front of the porch. How many stairs?
Um, one step.
One step?
It's very low.
Right, yeah, that's, I'm not concerned about, I'm just, the concern is like, how much further, so, cause we know the porch is gonna encroach, we have those dimensions, but if you add the stairs, that's an additional.
It's a twelve-inch step.
So.
Twelve of them.
And it will be less, I think, with the slope, where it's fifteen, yeah, so, it's probably gonna be, how, why does your house, you said thirty-two feet?
Uh, that piece, I believe, was thirty, thirty-two feet, yeah.
And difference is thirteen feet, so, in the middle. I think you're gonna, you're get, so the stair is gonna be farther back than the front corner, so.
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna be, it'll be okay, it won't be any closer than the front corner.
Okay.
It's still old within that.
And, and the way it's written, the way this, what, you know, the way we're writing the motion, it talks about the corners and not the middle.
We're, yeah. Corners, right. Are you comfortable with that?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, everybody comfortable with that?
But, but I just, if there was gonna be four steps coming out, and if they were coming, you know.
Yes.
Nope.
Good.
Okay, so, you understand what that is, you, and that's enough to meet what you wanna do?
Hundred percent, yeah.
Okay, everybody's good with that? So, that's the motion with those conditions. Um, so, I will need a second to my motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so, it passes.
Right.
And he's right.
Yeah, he was.
Permit got rejected, do we have to reapply?
You do, yeah, so what will happen is I will send, uh, the notice of decision to, uh, town staff, and then they'll send it to you. And then, once you have that, then you just go to the building department with our new building inspector, and then he'll work with you to get that going.
Awesome, thank you all, appreciate it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right, so the next, we have approval of meeting minutes, but I don't have those printed out. Do anybody wanna look at those, or you wanna hold off on those?
Let's hold off on them.
Hold off on, so, we're gonna continue.
You gotta have a lot of those.
After five cases, I think we're, we're.
All right, so, uh, any other communications in other business? Nothing?
There is none, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn, and anybody seconding that?
I'll second that.
Or just second it.
Thank you, George.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, all right, so we're adjourned at nine forty.